Good evening. The regular commission meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 will come to order. Please join me in silencing your cell phone. Madam Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Perine.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Present.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Will you please rise as Police Chief Feldman delivers the invocation?
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to come together as a city. We just ask that you reach down and provide protection to everybody in this room, their families, and all of the residents of New Smyrna Beach. I just ask that you be with our elected officials as they come together to make decisions on behalf of all of us, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing. I'd like to invite Keisha Sibley to come forward. She's a rising junior at New Smyrna High School. She is in the Criminal Justice Academy and also at Daytona State. She's an aspiring lawyer. She will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We're blessed to have some dignitaries in the room tonight. Joining Keisha at the podium, Judge Wes Hight from the 7th Judicial District. Judge, would you come forward? And Attorney Victoria Zen, New Smyrna resident and mentor and coach for Keisha for the next year. I'd like to take a picture. Thank you, Judge Hight. Thank you, Council Zen, for being here. Also, welcome to the Honorable Will Roberts, our tax collector, the man everybody loves to hate. We're glad you're here, sir. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, are there changes to the published agenda?
Mayor, I have one addition to the agenda. I want to add item 7S, as in SAM. That is Resolution 4724.
Got it. Thank you so much. We'll add that to the consent. Is there more?
For the public, in case there's any public comment, this is to allow Commissioner Martin to attend and participate in the July 23rd City Commission Special Meeting electronically due to extraordinary circumstances.
Thank you, ma'am, for the clarity. Appreciate that. And now, we have a special presentation. I'd like Leisure Services Director Rob Salazar to join me and the commission at the podium, please. All right. Great. Got some kids here from the Babe James Center to watch the city operate. Vice Mayor. The City of New Smyrna Beach proclamation designating July as National Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of New Smyrna Beach, and whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness and improve physical and mental health of all people who live near parks and recreation centers, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, exercising, jogging, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation programming and educational activities, such as after-school programs, seasonal youth, youth sports, and environmental education are so critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our community resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and national recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the City of New Smyrna Beach recognizes the benefits derived from the Parks and Recreation resources and urges all citizens to join in this special observance with the appropriate events and commemorations. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Fred Cleveland, do hereby designate July as National Parks and Recreation Month. In witness hereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of New Smyrna Beach to be affixed this 25th day of June, and I've signed it as your mayor and our city clerk has attested to it. Rob, thank you and congratulations. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, guys, for being here. That's all. Mr. City Manager, I understand we're going to get an update from the parking consultant, Carrie Clark. Carrie Carl, would you like to set this up, please, for us?
Yes, sir. As you know, we hired LTG Engineering and Planning to do our parking study. They started almost close about three months ago. They have done such a good job. We've been meeting with them on a monthly basis to go over their updated reports at this point. They will present tonight to you where they have gone so far. We also have a public meeting regarding the study on August 1st at the Brandon Center. But the amount of research, the amount of data that they have collected, and also their creativity in terms of looking at some of these ideas that's floating around the country in terms of parking solutions, I think we're very pleased with their work so far. Carrie has done a good job. We just met this morning. She will make a very short presentation for you to give you an update. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer the questions, and also, if you have any questions afterwards, we'll do that. After the public meeting that we have on August 1st, then we will make a big presentation to the commission as a workshop based on the public meeting and based also on the data that they have collected and also the ideas that they came up with. So with that, I'll ask Carrie Carl to the podium, please.
Evening, Ms. Carl. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission. Again, Carrie Carl, I'm with LTG, a traffic engineering transportation planning firm in Ormond. Some of you may know our founder and president, Sands Lassiter. He currently chairs Team Volusia, and I've had the distinct honor of being your project manager on this parking analysis. So what have we been up to? We started by reviewing your past parking studies, your prior task force recommendations. We've listened to workshops and past public meetings on parking. We've had good discussion with some stakeholders. That includes the Southeast Volusia Chamber, the FABA Board, representatives of Canal Street, Debbie from Visit New Smyrna Beach, and a couple of residents on Peninsula Avenue have been willing to give of their time as well. And it is clear that this city is not without an abundance of solid ideas and potential solutions to address your parking issue. And so, we hope to bring some prioritization to these different strategies, an action plan, that ultimately is going to maximize your existing parking or augment your current supply. So, we are focused on Flagler Avenue, Canal Street, and your last task force, Chona Light, on Venetian Bay's Town Center. Some due diligence, some data collection we've been going through. We obviously have pulled FDOT's traffic counts. Volusia County has been very supportive of this city, providing their beach toll data to kind of throw out a fun fact. On a given day, you could see 2,000 vehicles using your five ramps going through New Smyrna Beach. For context, if you look at the eastbound traffic going over your north and south causeway, eastbound only, it's about 15,000 on a given day. Now, at your peak, on peak seasons, there are, I've seen upwards of 4,000 vehicles going over those ramps. We also looked at your tourist development tax, and that was just to get a sense of when your seasonality was, so we were able to quantify that. Many of your retailers kind of just knew it offhand, but this way, we were able to quantify when that peak season is by looking at when those, tourist development tax being the bed tax, how much hotel stay there is, and we correlated that back to the beach toll data, and they seem to show some statistical significance. So, we also utilized some GPS data, cellphone data. Some people may not be pleased to know, but that's becoming quite a known source for both vehicle traffic and foot traffic, and we chose streetlight. Each vendor applies their own proprietary statistical algorithm, so these are estimates, but we chose streetlight. Then you can do visual counts of parking. This was done in 2019 on Flagler, so what we did on Canal, on the segment between Faulkner and Magnolia, for four days, there was visual counts of your parking, and what we found was 50% of the time, your occupancy was at 80% or greater. And what that means is, in the industry, 80% is considered healthy. Your parking is being utilized, but you have good turnover. 50% of the time, you are at greater than 80%. And again, we just got this data, so we're getting into the granularity of it, and we'll have more specifics on that, but that was just sort of a tidbit I thought I'd share with you tonight. We've done several site visits. I had the pleasure of coming down on Memorial Day, driving from Deland. I took State Road 44, the South Causeway. I drove to the beach, up and down, and along Flagler. That was actually where a resident was kind enough to let me go on a golf cart all around, so we really got to experience it. And I'll tell you, from Airport Road, the five miles to Mission Drive took me 15 minutes. Now, on a typical day, that should take you seven to eight minutes. And some of you might be thinking, oh, gosh, that's, what's seven or eight minutes? When you're sitting in traffic stopped and you have no idea if that's going to be seven minutes or an hour, that is where that experience is saying to you, this is not good. I wanted to share, it's been a while, but you might remember the days of road rage. It was hitting the news. People were killing each other over it. It was really awful. And so, what studies showed was psychologically, if you could give people in their vehicles an understanding of how long they were going to have to wait, it calmed them down. And that's why you see on the interstate those signs that give you seven-minute delay, 15-minute delay. That way, you have an understanding and an expectation, and I think you can emulate some of that by setting that expectation on peak seasons, what to expect from the traffic. I went into it expecting traffic, so it wasn't a stressful experience, but I could see for someone who's just coming up to New Smyrna Beach, that might have been a little overwhelming. Your last task force did make the recommendation to stand up a mobility department. Our group does concur, you need a dedicated staff person. Now, if that is a department, we looked at mobility departments around the state of Florida, but ultimately feel like those tasks that will have to be executed and the plan that needs to be implemented is going to dictate, do you need one full-time person? Do you need a full-time person and a support team? So we are continuing to write out what those tasks will look like and how much work effort that's going to be. I want to mention, we looked at population, actually not for, we did look at Volusia, but we were focused on the Orlando metropolitan area, and the reason for that is you have such a draw from there. And as you would expect, as with the state of Florida, the Orlando MSA has been growing. It's been growing with high-wealth individuals, which kind of assumes that you have discretionary spending to go to the beach, to go to Canal, and they are projected to continue to grow. And so, we thought of it this way, even if you said there is no problem today, it would make sense to get ahead of that population growth that assumed increased demand and mitigate any future pressures. I'll go back to Volusia County. When we started this, and it wasn't until after we started, we found out that Volusia County is going to go through a tremendous effort on the beach to revamp their beach toll technology. Hopefully, that'll make it a little more expedient to get cars through. I had someone ask, what's taking so long? Because some people are still paying in cash or paying when they get there, not prepaying, they stop, they have to go through that process, and people are asking questions, and so it's delaying. So what they're trying to do is automate this and get people pushed through a little faster. The other thing they're going to do is, there's about 331 spaces that Volusia County maintains, which is in New Smyrna Beach, off the beach, and they are going to start charging for parking. Now, you already charge for parking, and they're going to use license plate readers, LPR technology, to do the enforcement. So there needs to be a lot of coordination with the county about how you make that seamless customer service experience going between New Smyrna Beach and where the county is going to have their paid parking program, and that's another task that your full-time, dedicated staff could handle. And again, I want to just say, Volusia County's been very helpful, very supportive, and are very open to working together. Collette mentioned our next steps. We have been having monthly status updates. Our next one is end of July. By that time, we hope to have a draft prepared that we internally will wrestle through, and then by mid-August, have to use something more cleaned up, so you can have time to review it. We hope to have early September, I think, a special meeting or workshop where you can ask me and our team lots of questions, get into good discussion. From there, we'll adapt the plan as need be and submit to you by the end of September when our contract is up. A final report. I want to mention a full house tonight. I'd like to believe they're here for me, but if anyone wants to, I'll stay back, and I'm happy to start talking to citizens today. We do have that public meeting August 1st, but if anybody wants to chat with me, I know none of you can because you'll be busy, but happy to do that.
Carrie, thank you for that report. Any comments or questions from any of my colleagues? We have, yes, ma'am?
I'm sure you misspoke, but at one point, you were talking about the traffic count and beachside, and you mentioned 15,000 heading east with a peak of 4,000. I'm guessing you meant 1,500 heading east with a peak of 4,000.
Yeah, apologies. I saw you looked quizzical. 15,000 is the total traffic going over the north and south causeway? And then you would look at beach toll data and say, at its peak, you have 4,000 going over the ramps, the beach ramps? So just trying to give you a sense of scale.
Okay, so we're talking about two causeways versus just the beach ramps?
Correct.
And of course, one of the things, very important to make clear, is that the city gets no revenue from the beaches, so there is a big divide over, you understand?
I do, yes.
The dollars we're talking about.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Carrie, thank you very much. We'll look forward to hearing much more in the coming weeks. Appreciate you being here tonight. Before we get into the City Manager's report, I wanted to point out, I do see the full house, so I wanted to talk to, we're going to go through the consent agenda, and then we're going to go through second readings and administrative business, and we'll have a robust discussion about each of those items. And Section C is ordinances and first readings, and there are four of them in there, and many of you may be here to speak to those. Classically, we do not discuss, we don't have a discussion on the first reading, and so if you haven't got a song sheet, 10A is about the historic building overlay. 10B is about the floor area ratio. 10C is about the B2 zoning change to PUD 1300 South Atlantic, and Item D is about the septic-to-sewer in Silver Sands. So, just wanted to let you know, the 13th of August is the meeting that that will be robustly discussed, and if you're here tonight to talk about that, fine, but the opportunity where it will be on the record for, in consideration for how we vote on that, it'll be more impactful on the 13th. Your report, sir, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. I know it's a busy night, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but under the City Manager Reports, I have indicated in the report that I participated in a virtual call with Volusia Flagler, American Heart Association Development Director. She was, they're having a program on sometime in October, I think, where they have an annual heartwalk event, and so they're asking for the city employees to be a participant in that event, and I think we will encourage our employees to be, to participate in that event as well. We received an email from Senator Tom Wright regarding the four projects we submitted through the Appropriation Committee, and unfortunately, three of them were not approved. They were vetoed by the governor. So only one project was approved, and that is the North Atlantic Project, where we received in the amount of, I think it was 837,000. We're really disappointed because one of those projects, I wanted to submit for a generator for some of these facilities that we use for a post-shelter if we have to, such as Babe James and the City Gym and also the Live Work Center. We submitted an application through the county transformed 386 program. One project was eligible for that, and it was the Corbin Park Project, so we submitted in the amount of $6 million under that program. We also went to and attended the Fourth Annual Economic Summit at the Brandon Center with the Chamber of Commerce. The entire commission attended the workshop. I'm looking forward to meet with the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Board to start looking at the action plan. We also attended the Juneteenth Gala at the Brandon Center as well. I have attached in my reports the social media report for you, the financial reports, as well as the permit issue and summary reports, and also the NSP Utilities Monthly Capacity Metrics Report. In terms of the public participation at the last meeting, I think there was one comment that probably required discussion there or an answer to it. I think it was suggested by one of the participants that the city expanded its opportunities to earn passive income, and he cited the Leisure Services practice of selling banner space at sports facilities as an example. And already, our Assistant City Manager and Leisure Services Director, they're working on a program, if it's possible, there. We have another participant who made three statements, but one of the statements was regarding our public, the parking consultant, that in the proposal, they were supposed to do a monthly report, and she did not see that. The monthly meeting that we had, it's with the staff, and the City Manager have updated the commission every month on the parking study. So that's as far as that. Also, I have an update on 120 Flagler. It went out yesterday, was advertised under the LoopNet, DemandStar, and the city website, and also, I think Vice Mayor Perine is working with the staff to put it on the other websites to expand our exposure there. Also, as you know, that Will Roberts is in the audience, he will be speaking under the public participation. I have received an email from his office regarding what he's going to be talking about. He will be talking about that, but I just want to let you know that it's a good program. It's a kids' tag art program. There is two schools from New Smyrna that they participated in this program. I think he's looking for a sponsorship in an amount I think it's affordable, and I would encourage to do that. I think we have the funding to do that, but he will speak in more detail about it. Also, I have Efren from the NSP Utilities. I have asked Efren to come tonight to this meeting to just give us an update on the power issue that we had sometime last week, give you an update of, you know, what happened and what they're doing on it. So Efren, if you don't mind?
Good evening. So on Thursday, June 13th through Friday morning, the 14th, we had the loss of two feeders, two 24 KV 1,000-volt feeders that supplied the South Beach area. We have adequate capacity for the high heat and/or low days for normal contingency. What that area historically was designed for the loss of one of those two feeders, but an underground fault occurred on feeder cables, housing, and vault manhole located on the South Causeway near Bouchelle Island. So I don't, as you've known, in bigger cities, you have similar instances that have occurred where the doors are literally blown open, and the fault energy and fire also caused the second feeder supplying the area to fault. So utilities typically plan for one, for the first contingency, which is loss of one feeder, and then we transfer load to other feeders. Since we had the loss of both feeders, where possible, load was moved to other adjoining feeders. As soon as the cause was identified, Pike Electric Specialty Cable Splicing Crew was sent from Palm Beach Gardens to work on the repair. About 4,000 customers where load could not be transferred remained out of service until the cable splicing repairs were made. So the repairs were completed around 5:00 to 6:00 in the morning on Friday, and then work was done to prepare for the restoration. Between 8:00 and 9:30 a.m. on Friday, June 14th, all service was restored to those remaining customers, and the system was returned to normal configuration. So we had our Pike Electric, our staff of linemen, water operations, engineering personnel work through the night to ensure that we restored as quickly and safely as possible. We also had some assistance from NSB PD for traffic control. So what we're doing to mitigate this event while we're doing the longer-term solution, we're looking at those two splice boxes, so there's one by the bridge at the park and one by Bouchelle Island. For those two splice boxes, we're looking at taking one of the feeders out of each of one of those boxes and bypassing the manhole vault. This way, if either one faults in the future, it does not cause the other to go out. If we lost either one, we could then easily pick up load from another feeder. Another project that we're working on is to pick up additional Another project that we're working on is to pick up additional capacity from the North Causeway and run what we called field spun aerial cable under the existing overhead lines and connect into the overhead system in the South Beach area, giving us the ability to move load between the north and south ends of our system. So these two shorter term in law, in, in the preparation for the longer term solution will take three to six months is what we're planning on because of the material availability and what we're looking at. But longer term, what we're budgeted, what we have budgeted for is for two additional feeders under the river. So, but wanted to provide an update on what we're doing. We understand while we're doing the longer term, preparing for the longer term solution, we do have short term measures in place that we will act upon to mitigate this type of outage in the future. So.
Thank you, Efren, for coming forward and getting that on the record for everybody to see. Any comments or questions from any of the commissioners?
Thank you for a thorough review and finding short term and planning for long term.
Thank you.
Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Efren. Appreciate you coming on and explaining. Luckily, we had a full house tonight, and I think a lot of these people are probably from the beachside area who may have been affected by it. You know, property, when power goes out, a lot of people, they, they want explanations.
No, understood.
And you guys do a great job with your website, showing who's out, how many people, how long it may be showing basically, you know, to the minute on as it shrinks or expands. So kudos to coming out and explaining the situation. I think that goes a long way to making people feel very comfortable about what's going on and make, and addressing the fact that you're going to work on it, and hopefully it doesn't happen again.
Ideally, that's what we're planning for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
When you, Efren, when you deliver the power so steadily, so regularly, any exception gets amplified, so you can understand.
No, we totally understand. We were quite surprised ourselves because it's been...
Can you comment on the original design, why both those feeders were originally put in the same box?
You know, that's, a lot of times, based on how things were designed way back when, that's kind of what was done. Now what we're doing is so we avoid that, you know, the failure of those two contingencies. What we'll do is we'll split those out to avoid that in the future. And of course, the longer term is we would provide two additional feeders to then, this way then, that'll almost eliminate that impact of how it was set up originally.
So you got some redundancy?
Yes.
Excellent. This is a step from the CFO job into the CEO job. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Chavez is the new interim CEO of the Utility Commission. And so it's a small step from left to right, but a large responsibility. Thank you for stepping in.
Of course. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, sir.
Take care. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Unless if you have any questions.
Excellent. No, no. Any, any questions for the city manager? Okay, very good. Okay, on to our favorite section, the public participation. If there are any citizens who would like to address the commission, we're going to give you an opportunity of three minutes' time to come up and do a monologue. It's not a dialogue, not a conversation. This is your opportunity to tell the commission something you think, something you feel, a compliment to a member of the staff, or a concern you might have in the neighborhood where you live. When you come up, you'll see a green light come on. That'll indicate you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute, and you should be done when the red light comes on. As you come up, please offer the assistant city clerk your name and address on the microphone for the record. Honorable Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, counsel, for letting me come up here and talk to you today. Will Roberts, Volusia County Tax Collector and New Smyrna Beach resident. So what I'm talking to you today about is our kids' tag art program. So I'm following the lead of other tax collectors throughout the state. They already have this program in place. And what we're, what we're doing is we're offering education, but we're also offering sponsorship and the ability to get more money to the art programs in the county of Volusia. So if you don't know, you, each year, the school district gives $75 to the art teacher for the year. And that's not per student. That's for the teacher for the year to buy And if, if the, if the school board or the school has extra money, they have the ability to give that to them, but sometimes it's in the form of like $100. So that would be $175 for the entire school year. So, you know, paper, crayons, stuff like that, that's pretty expensive if you haven't priced that lately. So that's where kids' tag art comes in. We raise funds directly through, you know, sponsorships, and they also have the opportunity to sell their vanity plates to their friends and family. So what kids' tag art does is it offers the fifth grade of the elementary schools that we have participating for the art classes to learn about the vanity plates or the specialty plates of the state of Florida. And if you don't know, we have approximately over 170 specialty plates in the state of Florida. All their proceeds go to some kind of charitable organization to help that charitable organization proceed or have revenue, some source of revenue. And the kids get to learn about that, but then they get to make their own plate. So this is our platinum sponsor, Halifax Health this year. That's their one that they chose. And then this is the one that I chose. And it's very interesting that, yeah, so it's very interesting that the, the young lady that created this one, her name is Delilah. So, so a heart, so very fitting. And so in an effort to show support for our schools, so we have two schools this year. So we only had one, one school this year as the pilot program. We have two school, two schools just here in New Smyrna. We have Chisholm and Reed Patillo. So we're looking forward to partnering with them. We've got a total of 10 or 11 that we're going to come onboard today or this, this year. But here in New Smyrna, as a resident and as our mecca of art, I would hope that you guys would consider being one of our sponsors, being one of our gold sponsors. You know, because we were able to give almost $4,400 to that classroom in Sugar Mill this year, where, again, they don't, they don't see that type of funding. So they're, and what, what were they going to use that for? Paper and crayons. So I think that's a, that's a big win for them. Also, we had an award ceremony, and, you know, in a school that had just had the tragedy not too long before then, I think it was a great feeling to have Vince Carter's mom, Dr. Michelle Carter, as the embassy of hope, because they're also one of our sponsors, came in and, and handed out one of the awards. And then we had John Guthrie of Halifax Health come in and hand out one of the awards. So it was really awesome to have that exposure and have those people in, in the classroom or in the ceremony. So yeah, the parents, parents and community members can purchase these plates, and half those proceeds go right back to the school and the school art program. And again, the sponsorship, whatever net proceeds we have goes back to the school. So we're definitely looking forward to that, and we thank you for your time today, and hopefully you'll be able to give us a sponsorship. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Glenn. I am here on behalf of 1111 and 1109 South Atlantic Avenue. The properties have been in my family since the 1950s. And I am here in opposition to the ordinance numbers 4624 and number 4724. I realize that you said that further conversation about mayor, that further conversation about this would not be very impactful today. Therefore, I will reserve those points, most of the points I wanted to make. But I did want to note that the community and the neighborhood is extremely concerned about this project. And I personally have been canvassing the neighborhood. And it's quite sad because I realize you, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, I know that you guys bear the burden of balancing the interests of helping our city grow with grace and making it attractive for people to come here, but also preserving the historic nature of our community. But unfortunately, it's quite sad to hear how much of a loss of faith many of the constituents have expressed in this commission. Most expressed that they thought that it would not make any impact, but they signed anyway. So what I would like to propose, send, give to you guys tonight is a copy of our petition. As of right now, we have 330 signatures and the count rose. So we should have way more by the time, our time comes around on August 13, I believe, when we get the chance to. I will note that this project, and in the spirit of the PUD, it does not match the neighborhood. It, in fact, towers over everyone. And I will note that unfortunately, the notice requirement is only for those within 150 yards, but this affects, this will tower over people that are past 150 yards, and that it will have many, many foreseeable adverse impacts to those of us who are in the area and who are New Smyrna Beach residents, tax, and taxpayers. So I thank you for your time, and I'll give this to, who do I give this to?
Hand this to the city clerk. That'd be great. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thanks so much.
Ma'am, appreciate that. Anyone else for public participation? Leslie.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commission, and staff. My name is Leslie Sacks. I live at 816 East 8th Avenue, New Smyrna Beach. I also would like to briefly speak about items 10B and 10C. Item 10B, which is a zoning text amendment, which is a very powerful and dangerous tool, which in this case will negatively affect our fragile beachside island and should not be used to get around existing zoning limits. A zoning text amendment allows this zoning change anywhere within our city. The risk of unintended consequences is very high. To allow any parking structure anywhere in New Smyrna Beach to go above the floor area ratio and current building height limits will cause tall buildings with reduced setbacks to loom over residential homes. This will cause an unbalanced and out of scale look, which is incompatible with the surrounding area of existing homes and businesses. The smell of car exhaust and extra traffic noise, potential crime and litter will make this idyllic beachside area undesirable. If item 10B passes, it will pave the way for item 10C's parking garage approval, which will create an out of scale blight on the neighborhood and reduce property values and the quality of life on Hill Street and the surrounding area. Please work within the existing zoning and/or negotiate a more balanced PUD for either a restaurant or a smaller parking structure, but do not combine both. NSB has always had the problem of trying to cram a size nine foot into a size six shoe. Only 100 parking spots allocated for beachgoers will not help, will not solve the beachgoer parking problem. There will never be enough parking due to our geographic size constraints. Please don't turn our island into a giant out of scale parking lot. Take more time and hammer out something that won't hurt the current taxpayers' property rights. Their rights should be just as important as the developer rights. Remember, there is an upcoming election, and NSB voters want their representatives to care about them and their sense of community and quality of life. Vote no for item 10B and renegotiate a more balanced PUD for item 10C for the residents' sake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Come on, folks. Let's keep the civility that we enjoy. Appreciate your sentiment, but we don't need to applaud or boo or any of that in this proceeding. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, everyone. Hi, I'm Sue Traskis. I'm at 1300 Hill Street. I'm right across the street. I guess my two biggest issues that I'm most concerned about is flooding during, Ian. I have pictures to show you. Third Avenue was flooded, so was South Atlantic, and I'm not sure how far it went from there. I wasn't living, or I was living in my house, but I wasn't there when Matthew came through. Matthew was even worse. We had debris everywhere. So during these horrible hurricanes, I think we're in a bad shape. The second thing that I'm very concerned about is these delivery vehicles, you know, the big semis for liquor, beer, vegetables, and so forth. Those are going down that road right now for Flagler Avenue. There is nothing in this design for where those guys are going to park. So where will they be? Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, South Atlantic. I think this is a mistake. You really need to look at the size and the height of how this is going to impact us. That's it.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Thank you. My name is Doug Everson. I live at 805 East 2nd Avenue, New Smyrna Beach. I've been traveling in New Smyrna Beach when there was only one bridge, and you had a hard time getting across it. So I've been here a long time. I spent most of my career traveling the state of Florida from town to town, village to village, teaching people how to drain properties because I manufactured drainage products. I bought over here decades ago, and I've been a resident and active as I can be over the years. Normally, my big mouth is out front, but I've been a little sly over the years as I got older. But I'm here because this is important to us and to the residents. So I'll be here on the 13th with my gang and whoever else will join me, and my lawyers if need be, because this is that important. What I would say to you is this. We are doing the right studies to control the flooding, absolutely. But the smart thing to do is to put in a floodgate. You only control flow of people when you, when you put in a way to control the people. What, what is being presented doesn't provide any value to the citizens who are voting for you. It provides value to the entrepreneurs who want to develop the property up there and, and raise some money as a result of it. We can look to Daytona Beach, we can look to Miami, we can look to Cocoa Beach or Titusville. If you've been here long enough, you've watched them go through their cycles where they became poor towns and turned over after decades. I'm a homeowner on New Smyrna Beach. I got here because of the beauty of New Smyrna Beach. We have a responsibility to control New Smyrna Beach. So I say before my time runs out, let's look at that floodgate. This is not an appropriate use of that land. Our percolation rate on the beach is already down significantly, and the easiest way to control the traffic problem or handle the traffic problem is tow those cars that are illegally parking on your residents' property. You gain property, you've gained tax revenue as a result of that, and will slow the flow. They're still going to find their way to New Smyrna Beach, but they won't be parking on our, on our driveways in our neighborhoods. We did that with the boat ramp, and it cut the problem down more than half. As soon as they were getting towed and their boats were getting towed, the problem diminished. They found other ways to get their boats on. New Smyrna Beach is going to grow. It's your responsibility and ours as citizens to make sure that we show our values, to let you know we want it to grow responsibly, so that what drives people here is preserved in a way that everybody can enjoy.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public participation? Robbie?
Good evening. I'm Robbie Gibson, minor, 2839, South Oceano Court, New Smyrna Beach. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the New Smyrna Beach Residents Coalition, and we are asking you as our elected representatives to discontinue what has been a decades-old practice of changing our building regulations in response to a single project. Our comprehensive plan provides the roadmap to the way we zone and plan our neighborhoods. The comp plan states land development regulations, including procedures and standards for zoning, subdivision, and site plans. subdivision, and site plans, will be maintained by the city consistent with the plan. All development must comply with those regulations and this comprehensive plan." To make this shorter, perhaps, I know you've talked about this, but time to revisit and revise our comp plan, LDRs, and is our strategic plan still our strategic plan? Does the vision still remain to be stewards for future generations? Last Thursday was a great first step in the workshop that addressed three LDRs. And I know it's a big job, but moving forward, if we could do that so that our roadmap is what's guiding development, not having a developer come in and create a new roadmap. If we don't know where we're going, we're going to probably end up someplace else. So we support any efforts that the city can do in that direction. Now I'm a citizen, I'm not representing the coalition, just wish to thank you for extending the moratorium on Portofino Reserve and Venetian Bay so that all of the facts can come in and we can work towards a resolution of the situation. We appreciate that support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comment. Anybody else for public participation?
Hi, good evening. My name is Heather Canuth and I'm a resident of Walker Drive, which is where the Turnbull Grand Canal flows. I'm here to talk about the dredging project on Turnbull Grand Canal. I understand from reading the article in the News Journal that we're still waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers' approval to proceed on that project. However, I'm here to ask what can be done in the meantime to help with stormwater drainage. I have personally pulled debris from the canal, picked up debris along the banks, and cut down Brazilian pepper that's growing into the canal. I'm here as a resident of the Walker Drive neighborhood to ask that you clean up the property that you own along Turnbull Grand Canal. Our entire neighborhood flooded during Ian in September of '22. We all cleaned up our properties, we rebuilt our homes, and we're trying to move forward. But every time I look in my backyard, I see downed trees, Brazilian pepper, and a bunch of stuff that can't move in the canal because basically it has not been maintained. I have lived there for 20 years and previously it was owned by a private property and I was always told that it was their responsibility to maintain that canal. Well, now City of New Smyrna Beach owns it and I haven't seen any maintenance of the canal itself. We had a very large homeless community living on the other side of the canal and that was removed probably a year ago. But that's the only thing that I've seen done to the property since it was purchased. So I'm asking, what, what happens if the Army Corps of Engineers never approves the project and it doesn't go forward? Where are we left? We've lived there, some people have lived there 50 years and they deserve to, to get some service. They pay taxes and we haven't gotten any help. So I'm, I'm asking to please at least cut down the Brazilian pepper that's overgrowing the banks on both sides. Maybe pick up the debris that's on the property north of me and across on the other side of the canal because when that floodwater comes in, everything goes to the canal and goes to the culvert and it's a big, huge dam and nothing moves. So.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else for public participation?
I don't want to add any extra points, but I would like to ask if those who are here in opposition of 10B and C could stand so they could see everybody.
Oh, sure, absolutely. If you're here for the 10B in opposition, please stand. We'd like to see you.
If you can't stand, please raise your hand.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good call. Anybody else for public participation? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As the very First Lady said, you have an unbelievably hard job to balance competing interests, competing goals. I'm Richard Polo. I live at 138 Portofino Boulevard. And I'm here because this is the current newspaper of our community and I attended an engineering and planning committee in the last month. And I listened to the presentation by Mr. Storch on the Deering Park Innovation Center. And what a great country that I get a chance to speak directly to you. How could I not turn down the opportunity? I want, I want to, I just, I have a few beliefs and they may not be shared by a lot, but here's, here's what I believe. If you took a survey, and I just came from a political fundraising event, and we, I took that survey just so that I could say this, the three, I would think the three concerns of most of our citizens in this community are overdevelopment, flooding, and traffic. At the engineering and meeting and Mr. Storch, there was, there was back and forth and it was clear that the planning committee said your goal was to get good jobs, development, bring them here to New Smyrna. And I was astounded. In my working years, it never occurred to me to live here. This is, will never be Silicon Valley. This will never be Orlando. This is a beachside community. And I think most of the residents want to maintain that. There is no innovation at Deering Park. When they describe the development and just look at the history of the Deering family, I think what you will attract is, for example, people like Amazon. They'll build warehouses. They'll have a whole bunch of $15 to $25 jobs, which are honest jobs. But those people can't afford to live in New Smyrna anymore. They will live west. They will, they will choke 44 and our roads. I ask in the future, because I think this is a freight train, I think it's already been, it's not, I'm not going to stop it. You know, we have 6 million square feet, 1,618 acres, 2,000 residential units. That will be built someday. I ask that you look carefully at those plans when they get presented to you in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public participation? Hello, Cynthia.
Cindy Snezak, 512 U. Bonn. Welcome back, Holliday. I hope you're feeling, feeling well. I brought two visual aids and I have to go to the library, but imagine this, this face is a 1.01 acre parcel, which is behind the Walgreens, which is on your agenda to be really hashed out on August 13th. So that's the surface area we're talking about. This height is the height of the Walgreens. It's a two-story building with a facade loop thing on the top. What's being proposed with the request to change the FAR by adding a commercial definition, which was crafted totally by the applicant, and I confirmed that today in a meeting with the development director. The city provided a bunch of different ideas, sources on how to, you know, what different people write, but it was written by the applicant. That, I think, speaks to Ms. Robbie's point about, please, question, even recommendations made by staff because between this, between what's coming up at zoning, I believe next week, which is 7th Avenue, and a request there to change that from neighborhood business to commercial. And I didn't see any restrictions that would not prevent that becoming a five-story with underground parking for the residences that it's their intent to build there. So we have to be really careful. That's an acre. This is the height of the Walgreens. This is the height that's being requested by the developer. And it's only allowed if you permit them to get their own definition of what the FAR is for commercial. New Smyrna has previously tried to define what that is and we stood well in terms of how it was defined compared to other beach communities. And I'll send you that report because I'd really like you to look at it. And there's, no, no part of me doesn't want to see that parcel redeveloped on by there every single day. I want to see it redeveloped. I want to see it redeveloped in a way that does not choke off the benefits that the residents in that area have. And I believe it's 150 feet that those mailings go out, not even 150 yards. Five stories high, that sound of a rooftop bar and a restaurant and another restaurant will travel out over the Carlisle Carville parking lot further than 150 feet. So please make choices, as Robbie said, revise the plans as they need to, but let's stop doing this one-by-one request from developers. That's going to hurt us.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public participation? Evening, Jess.
Good evening. Jessica Merrill, 700 South Cooper Street. I'd like to draw your attention, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor and staff, to Item 7B and 7L on the consent agenda. I took a gander today and I looked at this contract on 7B and I went through it, I know, and Section 1 stipulates that it be Exhibit A and Exhibit B, which I could not find. And also on Section 3, the words are spelled out $3,064.34. However, below that is the number of $3,764.34. So which is right? It's a question. It's a contract now, at least. On Section 13, page 5, Section 13, there's a warning in here that's kind of gets me in here, it's legalese, I understand, but it says that the, as far as repairs, renewed lease shall, unless otherwise, provided renting at the expense, make all ordinary repairs as shall be reasonably necessary to keep said lease premises in good condition and repair. What does the word reasonable mean? You know, if I have a little pothole, do I fill it in? Do I say this? What is, there's no definition of what the, the gamut could be, anything, basically. On Section, let's see, on page 14, which would be Section 31, it said, the paragraph's kind of confusing to me because it states, what I read it as, not a lawyer, of course. I read it as is, the repairs are made by the city. They don't pay for it. That's what I understand. And on Section, page 19, Section 41, it states cancellation by the city, it's lease filing bankruptcy, appointment receiver lesser assets, assignment by lease, conditions creditors, less see intended so. But the biggest thing that I've found is this entity is able to rent this for the next 20 years because he has a five-year lease now and renew four more times, it means 20 years. There's no price increase on these years, that's for CPI and 3%. So at the end of five years, he's going to end up paying instead of $3,000, about $4,200 maybe at the most, if that. The next one is on Item L is the contract, which for a restaurant, a Tiano's Restaurant, and it says that the first year will be, it goes from $1,700 to $2,500 the first year. The second year is going to increase $75 a month, basically, total, per month for the year there. In a five-year contract, he's only going to end up paying more than, I think increases by 3%. That's the whole thing. So how do we get a property that the city owns, and this is not just one of them, there's many other properties the city owns in here that leases are coming up and come and do that we see this happening? We need to find, in my opinion, a company that would do it for free, which I know one already, to advertise city properties and do a commercial thing there.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Thank you for your comments, folks. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions from any Commissioner on any of the items? Any comment or question on any of the items?
I got a comment.
Okay, Commissioner McGurk.
Go ahead and.
Yes, please.
7B, the epic lease is something I've pulled in the past. My understanding is, is that the, what we can charge for rent is heavily regulated by the FAA. I have a problem with a 20-year lease or what it is, is a five-year lease with four options without, it's not realistic to have that long of a lease. However, I've approved it in the past and I'm willing to approve it tonight because it's really a six-month lease. Either side can cancel the contract at any time with six months' notice. So that is the only reason, and I want to confirm with the city attorney that that is the, that is the correct understanding, that it is, that either party can, can cancel the lease with six months' notice.
Let me look real quick.
And.
Yeah, we can move on.
City manager, maybe you can confirm the market rate is, we're at market with that?
For, for the, for the airport?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, Commissioner McGurk, either party may terminate with or without cause upon six months' advance written notice.
So I will say that I've never been excited about these leases, however, they're heavily influenced by the FAA, influenced, actually regulated by the FAA. So we don't have a lot of control over it. And the only saving grace is, is that it's essentially a six-month lease. We can cancel it at any time. Thank you.
Anybody else for a comment or a question? Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I just have a comment on 7F.
7F, okay.
And I just note that the need for consultants, consultants such as this underscores your, Mayor Cleveland's comment at our last meeting, looking for a metric that indicates the impact of projects on city government as well as infrastructure. And we note, obviously, the NSBU capacity metrics for May in the city manager's report, which are, of course, concerning, but I think it's important, the, for example, 85% in May, we used 85% of the available capacity of electricity. And it's a little uncomfortable, but to understand when we add residents, when we add business, what do we do? If we add a parking garage, do we need more police to monitor it? Those other impacts, the trickle-down impacts. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up last time.
My pleasure. Any others for comment? Anybody like to pull any of the items? Any pull, any items to pull and discuss? Really?
Run with it, Mayor.
All right. Very good.
We have two proof consent agenda.
All right, very good. This was the first, and so, very good. All right, so including Item 7S, which is Resolution 4724 about using a Zoom call at the July meeting, so that's been added in here. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion, a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland.
Yes. Motion carries. The full consent agenda has been approved. Mr. Rashadat for the record.
I'm going to, I'm going to put this down somewhere. I'm going to frame it.
Absolutely. We had the sheriff in the, in the room a minute ago. His item is up. I believe he had to go to another engagement, but we've got Director Salazar here for a report on Item 8A, which is the use of the Brandon Center by the Sheriff's Department for their inshore slam April 4th and 5th, 2025.
Yes, sir, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commission, for the opportunity to bring this back to you for a further discussion. Last meeting on July 11th, I received direction from the Commission to follow up with the sheriff's staff and get a little more detail and dig down into some potential options for what the event was, you know, proposed. for what the event was, you know, proposing for use of the Brandon Center and Riverside Park. My staff and I met with the Brandon Center, or met with the Sheriff's Office at the Brandon Center last week and reviewed a variety of different options, including relocating the event to another venue, changing the scope of the event in Riverside Park and the parking lot at the Brandon Center. At the end of the discussion, the sheriff's staff felt that their initial request for use of the Brandon Center and Riverside Park on the Friday and Saturday, April 4th and 5th, their initial request was what was best suited for their proposed event, and they did not want to deviate from that proposal. I believe that there, there were a few gentlemen here from the sheriff's staff. There were three of them. I'm not sure if any of them remain. Not sure. Don't think so.
Got one.
We got one.
Got one. Great. So he's here as well to field any questions. And with that, that's my report and giving it back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I just add to his report, and I said that last time, but I just want to, as much as we said we wanted to, you know, increase our revenue for the Brandon Center, and that is a goal, I think, for all of us. I think in some cases, in particular in this case, I think the value that we get from the sheriff's office, I think far exceeds the value that we use at the Brandon Center. I mean, we, the sheriff's office, it helps us during special events, holidays, you know, that the police department have an outstanding relationship with the sheriff's office. So, you know, collaboration in local governments, I think it's a, it's a must. So just kind of keep that in mind. I mean, it's, it's really, we get services, as I've said, far more than what we're offering at the Brandon Center. So my recommendation as a city manager is to approve the use of the Brandon Center for the sheriff's office and to waive the fee.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any interest in, for many of my colleagues, in having a representative from the Sheriff's Department speak, or are we going to, are we going to add anything by that?
I would just, so as I understand it, they haven't tried to work with us or dialed back any, they want to have, they want to stay with what we saw last time. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there any chance that they did a revised application that was completely filled out? You know, like all the guesses and knows completed?
I have the existing application, and I did not go back to them with asking for another application.
Well, I just meant, you know...
I understand.
Filling the blanks kind of thing.
Any other, Vice Mayor?
I have comments. Of course, you know I do on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have anything against the sheriff. I love the sheriff, as I said before. I have a problem with this process, so. We budget in advance for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Juneteenth. We budgeted it last year. We don't have surprises like this. I don't want to see any more of these overrides because it makes us have to pick and choose what nonprofits are more important. This is almost $8,000, and we've required that you break even on the Brandon Center and live oak. How do we do that when we constantly have these overrides? I'm not going to approve anymore. I'm going to approve this one, but this is the last one. So figure out another process in a way where it budget season again. We don't meet until August. I don't want to see any overrides next year at all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, but that's the way it is.
Appreciate your comments. I got it. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay. So I would entertain a motion then to move forward with this issue. And we always place the motions in the form of affirmative. So is there a motion to approve the fee waiver for the Brandon?
Motion to approve administrative item for Item 8A.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Assistant City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you, Rob.
Appreciate the report. And so now we have Item 8B, consideration for the city manager, the new city manager agreement with Kevin Cowper. I see Director Kidd at the podium. Your report, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you. As you know, we went through an extensive search to find our next city manager after Collett retires in August. We went through our process and selected Mr. Kevin Cowper out of Dothan, Alabama. We have gone through the process at your direction from two different meetings and created a contract for him that our city attorney has drawn up, and we have that presented for you this evening for your approval. Staff recommends that you move forward with the approval of his contract.
Thank you, ma'am. And for the record and for my colleagues, this is the exact items that we, we had contemplated and proposed at our last meeting. Any questions for Director Kidd? Or the attorney? Yes, sir.
Not on the contract, but just a question. Did we stay under budget for our search?
We did, yes.
$25,000 under budget.
Okay. So I would recommend giving that money to the Brandon Center.
Very well said. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Kevin Cowper.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Kevin Cowper.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. City manager's contract has been approved. Congratulations, Collett. Okay. Onto Section 9, which is ordinances in second reading. A public hearing will be held to conduct, will be conducted to consider the approval of application number HTR 2-24. If approved, it will remove two historic oak trees from a commercial property located at 2331 State Road 44. Your report, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of application HTR 2-24, historic tree removal for two live oaks on, at 39 and 1/2 inches and 44 inches consecutively on the property at 2331 State Road 44. So the subject property, which is currently Sporty's Car Wash, includes one existing developed commercial parcel in PID 73431600040. Total is 71,859 square feet in total, and it's located on the north side of State Road 44 between Colony Park Road to the west and Jungle Road to the east in Zone PUD. So as with all HTRs, a ISA certified arborist, Tom Griffith, identified the two subject trees within a retention area on the property. His major findings were some canopy dieback, crown thinning, and standing water in the root system. So he actually hand dug near the root system. It's surrounded by Brazilian pepper, a lot of invasive species in there, and there's about seven inches of standing water because it is acting as a retention area at this point. So there's a lot of, you know, potential causes for the demise of those trees, including a lot of standing water in that area. So the, the, the commercial parcel that is developed is within Colony Park East PUD. And within that PUD, there is a conservation agreement that allows for 10 and 1/2 acres on the property to the north, and I have a map coming up next to show you that property. 10 and 1/2 acres designated as conservation, which is, one of its specific natures is for tree mitigation for a couple of these trees. So that was outlined in the PUD agreement, and this would apply in these, with these two trees. So as you can see, the 10 and 1/2 acres is directly north of this parcel, and that is, that is, that is the area in question. So with that, staff recommends approval of the removal of the historic trees, the two, one at 40 inches, 39 and 1/2, but we always round up, 40 inches and 44, due to the declining state and appropriate conservation easement utilized for the tree mitigation within the boundaries of this PUD, which the commercial property is actually in. However, this approval should be applied with the condition, staff recommends this approval should be applied with the condition that the site plan for the expansion, which is the reason for the, you know, the, the tree removal at this point, must still gain staff approval prior to the removal of these trees. And that is the end of my report.
Channing, thank you for your report. I appreciate that. Other members of the Commission with questions? Commissioner McGurk?
Channing, appreciate the report. You say that there's a number of possible factors that could affect the demise of these, of this tree. It's kind of in the stormwater system.
Correct.
Was that accounted for when the site plan came through? How did, how did a live oak end up in a stormwater retention? I guess is what I'm asking.
So from my understanding, it was, it was adamantly suggested that these two live oaks stay, you know, during that process. And Jeff Go, who was involved with that process, can speak more to the inception of, you know, the reason for those in that area.
It was probably keep them in there, see what happens, hope for the best. When you said, you said something at the end which caught my attention, an expansion of the existing Sporty's Car Wash?
Potentially.
And is that why they, we need the trees removed or because they're in poor health?
Currently, they're being removed for the declining health.
Okay. Thank you.
How long would it take these trees to die?
How long has Sporty's been open? Couple of years now. There's, there's, it's, it's, it's a longstanding process, especially with that retention area being built around there. You know, once that's set in there, it's, it's designed to hold water, and they're probably being over inundated.
The arborist, did the arborist opine on that? How long it would take?
He, he didn't allude to the, the length of, you know, at least the duration of potential decline.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, mine is, is just as the arborist's report indicates, live oak should not be in saturated, high-water table locations. The information should be taken into consideration when changing the topography of a parcel and locating retention areas, and there are additional things that we'll see coming along, like in Waterford Estates, where I am deeply concerned about retaining trees in locations that is dooming them. So I, I think we've got to be much more aware of this. I don't, and this isn't the first time I've heard of where trees were told to stay being their cause of death.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate those comments. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Mr. Hartman?
So we saw this previously a couple of years ago with the, with the Publix Shopping Center on 44. A lot of those oak trees were also in low retention areas where, and usually a couple of years after a hurricane season where we've had some active hurricanes and a lot of rainfall, we see the decline on those trees. These trees look almost exactly like those did at the time. So I think, obviously approve this, but I think staff needs to look at that going forward, in that if, if we are having some specimen trees on site, that we need to do everything possible to make sure that they're not included in some form of retention area or stormwater area going forward, if they can't kind of reshape the pond just a little bit. I know it's not always possible, but, you know, that would be some consideration for staff going forward.
Typically, certain type of trees that they go under retention area, obviously not a, not a live oak.
Right. Thank you.
Channing, thanks for your report. Appreciate that. Is the applicant present by chance? Opportunity to speak, sir.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Commission, my name is Roger Stracola, 265 Kennelworth Avenue, Ormond Beach, and I am the engineer that designed the Sporty's Car Wash. It's been in operation for approximately five years, and I also designed Aldi next door and the, what is now dental office just to the east. So all three of those developments I designed. That property was very low when it was originally developed by the original developer. So everything in there needed fill, you know. All three of those lots, all the fill had to be brought up. The drive in the back had to be brought up. We tried to save the trees at that time. We did put some tree wells along the frontage of the property, saved two large oak trees. There was also a 38-inch oak tree along the east property line that we wanted to remove because it was hit by, just hurricane damage, hit by lightning, and that tree is in very poor condition, but it's, it's also declining, but that's not part of this application. So as far as Sporty's Car Wash, he's, in the past five years, he's seen a big increase in his business, you know, more than he anticipated. And what he's proposing to do in addition to the automated car wash and your self-vacuuming is to create an automated interior detail tunnel just to the east of the existing vacuum bays. And that's approximately a seven to 10-minute experience for, once people go through the car wash, they can elect to go through the interior detail tunnel and have their cars interior detailed and cleaned, or they just still do the self-vacuuming. To have this new tunnel, we need to shift the drive out to the east where the stormwater pond is located, thus the removal of two declining oak trees. So that's what's being proposed. It's, the trees are declining. When I originally designed the pond, because of the city's requirements for stormwater treatment, you know, the, the pond had to work around the trees as much as possible. That was all fill that was brought in, and the trees were at almost existing grade at the time. So I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Any question for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice, Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you. When you do the extension or the addition to the driveway, are you going to then do some sort of underground exfiltration?
Yes.
Okay.
So currently, the system discharges into the master stormwater pond on the other side of Colony Park Drive, and then goes into the wetlands and the conservation area.
All right. I don't want to get too deep into what could have been or should have been or what the health was of the trees five, six years ago when you were designing it, but had, if you did an underground exfiltration system at that time, it may not have, may have been better for the roots of the live oaks because you wouldn't have inundated them with water. But that's then. This is now. That is what it is.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Public hearing is now open. If there are any citizens who wish to speak on this particular topic, please come forward, and you'll be heard. You'll have three minutes, a monologue, not a dialogue. Any, any public participation on this topic? Seeing none, public participation is now close. Any, any follow-up by the staff? Nothing, Channing? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And so now we will consider the application of number HTR 2-24. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve HTR 2-24.
Thank you, sir. And there's a motion and a second. Any follow-up discussion? Madam Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin?
I'm not sure yet, so I'll go with no.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
No. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. And so we're on to a public hearing to reconsider the approval of application number V11-22. If approved, would approve variance for 3311 Hill Street. We have the Development Services Director, Mr. Corbin there. We're anxious for your report, sir.
If I may interject, I have a few opening remarks.
Yes, please.
So as you may recall, at the beginning of the commission term in 2022, we considered this variance request. It's a property located at 33 Hill Street, and it was for a deck and two balconies that extended beyond the merged city DEP coastal construction setback, setback line, I'm sorry. Without going into the details, you know, this was December 22. The commission at that time denied the variance request for various reasons. The applicant did appeal to the Circuit Court, and after the matter was briefed and argued, the court found that the city did not apply the ordinance correctly. The biggest issue being the city did not compare the use of adjacent properties, even though they were constructed prior to the merge of the city's line. They also, the court also stated that there was no competent substantial evidence to support the denial. That order came out in March of '24. substantial evidence to support the denial. That order came out in March of '24. The ruling quashed the city's denial from '22 and required that the application the City Commission previously considered be reconsidered consistent with the court's ruling. There have been multiple attempts to get this item set at a mutually agreeable time, but it was to no avail. A few days ago, I did receive a request to withdraw the item, but it was without prejudice, which means the application can be brought back at any time. So based on that, you know, trying to close this item out, rehearing this item tonight does not prejudice the applicant in that they can still come back with, there was some dispute about their switching applications. So the matter that was before the court is the one you heard in December '22. So they're not precluded from coming back with any other type of application. And then reconsidering this would close out that court case. And Director Corbin's here to present his reevaluation based on the court's order. He will, you know, briefly go through those items and give you staff's new analysis and recommendation.
Well, thank you. I think you pretty much covered it all. But Shane Corbin, Director of Development Services, Kerry gave, already gave a pretty good overview of everything. Essentially, the original request was for a pool deck and a pool and some balconies that extended beyond the coastal construction control line. Well, let me back up first. So the property was purchased. The owners began planning this project, and then the city actually changed their coastal construction setback line to be synonymous with the state's coastal construction control line. And when that happened, it shifted, if you look up on the screen, you see the blue line and 331, the address. It shifted that blue line to where the red line is. And so they lost the available space on the lot to actually do their project. Here's a image of the actual site plan where you can see the line abutting the back of the house, the pool and the pool deck. So the property owners went for a variance. They were denied. They actually went through a couple of storms and there was some beach erosion. They amended their request and they removed the pool and the pool deck from their request. They proposed dune enhancements, but they included the paver patio and the balconies in their request. They, when they came back to the City Commission and appealed, that was denied. And that was the request that was challenged in court, and they won. So essentially, at this point, the court has mandated that we approve this request if I understand the court's ruling completely.
Not exactly approve it, but reevaluate it based on the nearby adjacent property owners. And the other issue is that the environmental impacts were going to be short-term and could be mitigated by the applicant's previous mitigation they offered.
Anything more?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Director Corbin? I have just one. Now, for clarity, this is the original proposal with a smaller deck, no pool, and nothing down below, right?
The original proposal was a pool, pool deck, as well as balconies. This one is only for balconies and a paver patio with no pool.
Which is what our original volleyback was, right?
It's what was appealed to you.
Okay, got it. Just for clarity, I wanted to add that. Is the applicant here tonight?
A representative is here for the applicant.
Perfect. Sir, right ahead. Name and address for the record, if you don't mind, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jay Christie Wilson III. I'm an attorney with offices at 601 North Fern Creek in Orlando, Florida. I do represent Mr. and Mrs. Williams, who are the applicants.
Great. Thank you, sir.
And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions for the attorney?
Yeah.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I, how much repair has been done? I know a lot of this, these discussions and proposals were done prior to Ian and Nicole and the winter bomb that occurred that January 2023. And so I'm trying to decide, understand if any of their plans have been modified to understand the amount of damage that was done to their property as well as their neighboring properties.
If I, I'd be happy to answer that. The dune system was damaged on the seaward side of the dune. The dune system remains, the toe of the dune remains on the landward side where it was before. Their project did not touch the dune. It does not do so now.
Well, there are trap bags all along there to protect that whole area, not just their property. And the entire access, just a property over, just a few feet, that entire access was gone. The road was gone. Chases was severely damaged. So I'm not sure how that would have stood alone as not really having damage when everything around it did.
Well, I think there was a lot of damage, not just on the beach, but inland. There's quite a bit of damage from those storms. And I would point out that those were statistically the type of storms that would only occur once every 500 years. So those were, those were anomalies, and there was damage. The damage is being corrected. The beach is being protected. But the, the actual impact that this project would have on the dune system is no different than it was before those storms.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I was just going to remind everyone that the criteria that Mr. Corbin has set out is the relevant criteria in a staff report, and any other inquiries outside of that is not relevant to this decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the council? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your, appreciate you being here. A public hearing is now open. If there are any citizens who wish to speak on this matter, please approach the podium. You'll be heard for three minutes.
Cindy Sniezak, 512 U. P. I appreciate that. I think you tried to do the right thing when you made the original vote on this. Just kind of a takeaway going forward then? Maybe there could be some clarity. There's nothing to do with this particular home or what they want to do there now, and what the judge has said now you have to let them do. But going forward, maybe we could get additional guidance from the county, because I'm kind of left at sixes and sevens in terms of, I understood based on reading, the good reason for making those two lines align. But having read the legal documents from the appeal on this one, it seems as if you have no opportunity to try to enforce that line to protect the coastline. And that can't be right. Put this particular case aside, but perhaps at a workshop or the good relations that we can expect the, the existing city manager and the new city manager coming in to go forward because he was in a county position. There's something we must be missing here, because why move the line and go through all the expense and the thinking and the hearings and everything else that the county had done if you can't enforce the line because somebody years ago, including this same applicant, built a home that went over the line? So that's sort of a going-forward position. It's nothing to do with this. The other thing is, I would, I would hope and ask the homeowners to please consider that when they're siding those poles, that they need to drive into the dune to provide for those, the decks that will extend over the line. It was noted, I believe, in what was published, that there is one or more gopher tortoise nests there. There's a way to do something that allows those poles to be driven and not cause the relocation of those turtles. If I had known about this with more time, I would have brought somebody over from marine discovery or coastal studies. But the huge majority of gopher tortoises that are relocated die because they know where they used to live, believe it or not. And they will travel miles to get back to that. Plus, they're used to the ecosystem in which they live, including the diseases and, I won't say diseases, but infectious kinds of things that they can pick up. And so when they move to a new location, that and their desire to come back home to that dune in New Smyrna results in their death. So if, if the petitioners would at least consider that when they're trying to drive those poles and save those one or two nests, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate your remarks. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Does the city have any closing remarks? The applicant like to make any closing remarks? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, the City Commission will now consider the application for number V-11-22. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion for approval.
A motion to approve. And a second, any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Thank you. The motion's been adopted. Thank you for coming, sir. We're on to item 9C, which is a quasi judicial hearing. We will be conducting that hearing to review and consider the application, the approval of a reserve at Lake Waterford, the final plat, and authorize me to execute the contract for the plat recording. The quasi judicial hearing is now open. We will listen to our chief planner, Mr. Gove.
Thank you. This request is for a final plat approval for a single-family residential subdivision within a site of almost 44 acres to contain a proposed 45 residential lots with the minimum proposed lot area being over 13,000 square feet. Property is currently undeveloped and largely cleared, zone PUD, and generally located at the southernmost end of the city limits, north of Esslinger Road, west of Old Mission Drive, and immediately east of Lake Waterford Estates. The predominant proposed lot size is averages 80 feet wide. And again, the smallest proposed lot is over 13,000 square feet. Well, the largest is over 33,000 square feet. This will be accessed by a single private and gated roadway entrance that's proposed with this connection to Esslinger to the south, which is the only possible access. It's controlled and maintained by Volusia County and probably will remain that way since it's the dividing line between the city and Edgeworth. PUD Master Development Agreement was approved by the City Commission in 2019. That allowed for a maximum of 50 lots and a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. But there was another provision there that said at least 75% of the lots had to be 75 feet wide. So that's why we're getting larger size lots as opposed to that small lot size in the MDA. And that's why they're much larger than that minimum. There's an existing large pond within the eastern half of the property, which was previously used as a borrow pit, and will serve as part of the stormwater management system. Another large pond is proposed to be dug within the western half of the site to also serve as part of the stormwater management system, along with providing compensatory flood storage area. The site contains a total of 57 historic trees, with 48 of those deemed to be alive and nine found to be dead, dying, or diseased. There was a 2020 settlement agreement between the applicant and the city, which is within your agenda packet, that permitted a maximum of eight live historic trees out of 10 that were specified in that agreement to be removed, along with four other historic trees that were found by an arborist to be dead, dying, and diseased. That was made following a prior request in 2019 to the City Commission by the applicant to remove 14 trees, which was denied, and ultimately, the agreement followed that. That same settlement agreement also allows for the elimination of all sidewalks within the private roadways in this gated community. City staff has reviewed and approved the plat and plans as conforming to all applicable city LDR standards, along with those within the PUD MDA. The plat's been reviewed by independent surveyor on behalf of the city as is required, and the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously 5-0 at their May 2022 meeting to recommend approval to the commission of the plat. With that, we recommend the City Commission approve this final plat and authorize the mayor to execute the contract for plat recording. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Any member of the commission have a question? Mr. Hartman?
Jeff, when we approved the original PUD, did we put a time limit on it, expiration?
There's a time limit of 10 years from when it was approved and recorded, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Martin?
Looking, I understand that the building methodology is grading as opposed to stem wall or pier. Isn't that what creates drainage in subsequent areas in, that may in fact relegate the existing historic trees to damp areas or basins?
There's a lot of existing trees that are being preserved.
Yes, I'm concerned about them being relegated to damp areas. We've grading the property, the, you know, the water sheds, or we've got the retention areas and ponds, and we've just gone through what happens when good trees
Right.
are in damp areas. And I'm just worried about the topography changes. I'm concerned that the topography changes in the drainage system may pre-doom some of those trees that are intended to be preserved.
Well, yeah, I didn't review the stormwater plans. Our city engineers do that. But these lots, great.
That brings a question. The people who look at the trees are different from the people who look at the stormwater system, which might account for the fact that trees end up in those damp areas, right?
That's possible, yes.
Thank you.
The way the lot grading's proposed on these, because they're basically majority all on the ponds, the existing one and the proposed one, they're all going to drain towards their rear property line, so into the lake. The ones that are not on the water on a lake, which is maybe four or five, they drain the other way towards the street, and then it's piped into the lake from where it's collected there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Jeff, appreciate your comments. Is the applicant
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Jessica Gawa, Copco Law Firm, 1 Daytona Boulevard in Daytona Beach, Florida. We recently moved, and I'm getting used to it. Let me try to get a full screen view here for ease.
Thank you, Jessica.
Here we go. Perfect. All right. I just wanted to start by thanking city staff. They have noted in their professional report that the plat does meet all state law and local regulations for approval of the subdivision plat. But there are a few points that I just wanted to walk through to have some information based on public feedback through the process and on everything that we have seen. So this is the project boundary. As noted, to the east, we have a church, and then a little further is the recreational vehicle park. And then we do have single-family surrounding us on the other sides there. This is a general layout that I'm just going to use to touch base on. A few notes here. It's 45 residential lots. The open space of the site as laid out and designed on this is about 43% overall. It is within the requirements of the PUD and the city's land development code. We do have very minor isolated wetland impacts that were permitted concurrent with this plat. Overall, less than half an acre on the overall 45 acres or so. And then I want to focus on the next three slides that go into grading and also flood management on the site. And so this is a colored version of the flood impact area exhibit created by the applicant and reviewed by city staff. It shows different elevations. It shows different elevations proposed throughout the development and also the impacts to the flood plain as a result of this development and the offset. So overall, it shows that the impacted area is just over nine thousand cubic yards of flood plain. And then on that, I'm going to say southern orientation-wise here, although it is not true southern, it is western, parcel there on the bottom of the screen is the replacement comp storage area, which is over twelve thousand cubic yards. And so you see an excess there, and also this plan really shows the layout of the trees for removal are located within that area of the pond. So we don't want them to be inundated with water, as noted, and the historic trees being removed, as you'll see in the backup on the historic tree removal plan, are clustered in those areas. And then briefly on the next two, I thought they were helpful. There you go. Snap into focus. This site has two different drainage basins across it. So we have basin A and basin B. And I want to go through the pre-development and post-development stormwater management of the site. So in the pre-development, we have basin A, which has an eight-point-two cubic feet per second outfall to the east, and one at one-point-oh-seven to the west for the twenty-five year event, for a total discharge of nine-point-five-nine cubic yards or cubic feet per second, CFS. In the post-development basin, we are able to completely remove the discharge to the west. And so water that's currently flowing off-site to the west will be completely contained within the site. And then from the other direction, the eight, yeah, the eight-point-five-two to the east is reduced to eight-point-oh-one to the east. And so even to the east, with capturing the other, the flow of water off the site is still reduced in the post-development condition, in the pre-development condition. We did talk a little bit, and I'll go to the post-development. The little squiggles here demonstrate where the water is meant to flow, and so, like it was noted, it mostly flows interior to the lake. I'm talking fast, sorry, guys. To the lake there in the center or to the compensatory storage area, and some of it will drain directly to the road where there's a piping system that then elits into that lake as well. And so those are the high points I just wanted to touch on, and we're here for any questions that you guys have.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate your comments. Commission would like to now hear from the public. Any comments that you have on this topic? You'll be given three minutes. Please come forward, and you'll be heard. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. The public hearing is now closed. Quasi judicial hearing is now closed. Any closing remarks from the city staff? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is there a motion for approval of the reserve at Lake Water for the final plat and authorization? Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes, the motion is approved. Thank you very much. On to item number 9D. Madam City Attorney, if you'll read the ordinance 3524 for the second time by title only, please.
Ordinance number 3524, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach considering the extension of the temporary moratorium adopted by ordinance number 1724 on the issuance of certain building permits for a section of Venetian Bay, generally located north of State Road 44, east of Airport Road, and south of Medina Way. That would impact the malfunctioning stormwater system for a period ending no later than January 28th, 2025, unless automatically terminated or extended by a subsequent ordinance, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. We have got Development Director Shane Corbin here to give you a report. We're ready, sir.
Okay, so you all heard this at the last meeting. I don't have any new visual aids to give you, but I've got a presentation if you want me to go through it, but I know we've got a lot on agenda tonight, so I would just say everything's pretty much the same. We have been in contact with the HOA as well as the engineers, so we're still doing our work. We've asked for readings of the piezometers, and we're partnering with the HOA to host some public meetings. We're going to participate with them at their next HOA meeting and really try to do some public outreach with the residents so they can see all the work that the city is doing, as well as the engineering staff with the HOA. So we're doing that. We've also reached out to several of the residents and offered individual meetings with them to come either to them or they can come to us. So we're trying to step up our public outreach game on this topic.
Any questions for Director Corbin? Shane, I have a couple, just for the record and to reiterate what you said last time. And what we get for an extended moratorium is you to complete your research and finish collecting your data.
That's correct.
Okay, so to end it right now and to have you make a determination right now with inconclusive data and evidence would be premature.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Has the water table gone up at all? I know you have the, what is, piezometers?
Piezometers.
Yes, and we were hoping for more rain to give you some better data.
That's correct.
Is it improving?
The water levels are currently down in all the ponds, but what we've, what we believe we found from some new data we looked at today was that although the water levels are down in the ponds, they're actually at an elevation that was higher than the system was designed for. So I want to be careful to jump to any conclusions. And again, I'm not an engineer. Ton is really the expert on this, Ton and Kyle and Jesse. But we're, that's what we believe we looked at the data today that showed.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McGurk?
We had some significant rains in the past forty-eight hours. Have we been out and looked at that neighborhood, the specific streets that had been flooding to see if that was improved, or is it still experiencing the same thing? Or did we check it out?
I don't believe anyone's been out, but I know the water levels in the ponds are low, and they've got a lot of capacity right now. And I don't believe the rains were significant to have them backflow through the storm drains and come up to the streets like we've seen in the past.
Thank you, Shane.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your report, Shane. Public hearing is now open. Is there any citizen who wishes to speak on this topic? They'll be given three minutes. Approach the podium, name and address for the record. Your monologue, please. Robbie.
Robbie Gibson, minor, 2839 South Oceano Court, New Smyrna Beach. I'd first like to say, we usually have a lot more people here, but there is a neighborhood fundraiser tonight, so they are here in spirit, but their comments, you've heard their comments in the past, and I don't think that we need to be redundant in repeating those. However, I would like to comment that we are happy that we're going to be reaching out to the community. We had a HOA board meeting last night that was attended by a hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty people, and this communication was discussed, and we look forward to having those discussions and those meetings set up. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your remarks. Anyone else for public participation? Hello, Joe.
Joe Glubak, 3587 Casalta Circle, Venetian Bay. You've had many testimony about the flooding issue within Venetian Bay well beyond that had been noted in Portofino East. Also, the existing, the issue exists as we have other developments neighboring Venetian Bay coming on board, namely Shell Point. You recognize that concern, and I'm here to remind you of your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those remarks. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. The city commission will now consider adoption of ordinance 1724. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm so moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now a public hearing will be held to consider the adoption of following ordinances regarding annexation to properties located at 2565 Pioneer Trail. The city attorney will read ordinances number 3624, 3724, and 3824 for the second time by title only, please.
Ordinance number 3624, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach annexing one-point-four plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Pioneer Trail between Congdon Lane and Nuelo Street, addressed as 2565 Pioneer Trail, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within commission zone three, providing for public hearing, provided for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 3724, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of one-point-four plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of Pioneer Trail between Congdon Lane and Nuelo Street, addressed as 2565 Pioneer Trail, from Volusia County urban low intensity to city low density residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, writing for public hearing, provided for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 3824, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning one-point-four plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Pioneer Trail between Congdon Lane and Nuelo Street, from Volusia County A3A transitional agriculture airport overlay to city A3A transitional agriculture airport overlay zoning district, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Senior Planner Bob Mathen is here for a presentation. We're ready for your presentation, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the property owner has requested a voluntary annexation, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning from Volusia County future land use designation of urban low intensity and a Volusia County zoning designation of A3 transitional agriculture with an A attached for the airport height notification zone, to a city future land use designation of low density residential and a city zoning of A3 transitional agriculture with an A attached for the airport height notification zone. So the site contains approximately one-point-three-nine plus or minus acres. It is located on the north side of Pioneer Trail between Congdon Lane and Nuelo Street. And at the regular scheduled meeting on May the 6th, 2024, the planning and zoning board voted six to zero for a positive recommendation to the city commission to approve the requested overall annexation application. Staff also recommends the city commission to approve the request of annexation, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, amending the future land use map to city low density residential, and a rezoning to A3 transitional agriculture with an A attached for the airport height notification zone. And that concludes the summary of the staff report. Except any questions commissioners may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the senior planner? Seeing none, thank you, Bob, for your report. Public hearing is now open. Are there any citizens who wish to speak on this topic? Please approach the podium, and you'll be heard. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. The commission will consider the adoption of each ordinance separately. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 3624?
Motion to approve ordinance 3624.
Second.
And then a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion's adopted. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 3724?
Motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the first motion?
Mr. McGurk, seconded.
I did.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion 3724 has been adopted. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 3824?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. So 3824 has been adopted. So now we'll hear, we'll open a public hearing to consider the adoption of the following ordinances regarding annexation for property located at 644 Delora Street. Madam City Attorney, if you'll read ordinance number 3924, 4024, and 4124 for the second time by title only, please.
Ordinance number 3924, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach annexing point-five-six plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Delora Street, north of Page Avenue, addressed as 644 Delora Street, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within commission zone four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 4024, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point-five-six plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Delora Street, north of Page Avenue, addressed as 644 Delora Street, from Volusia County urban medium intensity to city medium density residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, writing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 4124, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point-five-six plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Delora Street, north of Page Avenue, from Volusia County R4A urban single-family residential airport overlay to city R2A single-family residential airport overlay zoning district, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Senior Planner Mathen, your report, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So the property owner has requested the voluntary annexation, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning from a Volusia County future land use designation of urban medium intensity and a Volusia County zoning designation of R4 urban single-family residential with an A attached for the airport height notification zone, to a city future land use designation of medium density residential and a city zoning designation of R2 single-family residential with an A attached for the airport height notification zone. So the site contains approximately zero-point-five-seven-five plus or minus acres. It is located on the west side of Delora Street, north of Page Avenue. At the regular scheduled meeting on May the 6th, 2024, the planning and zoning board voted six to zero to give a positive recommendation to the city commission to approve the requested overall annexation application. Staff also recommends the city commission to approve the request of annexation, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, amending the future land use to city medium density residential, and a rezoning to city R2 single-family residential with an A attached for the airport height notification zone. And that concludes the summary of the staff report. Except any questions commissioners may have.
Thank you, sir. So open a public hearing for this. Any comments from the public? You'll be heard. Please come forward, you have three minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. City commission will now consider these ordinances for adoption. We'll do it separately. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 3924?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 4024?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 4124?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Perrine?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Cleveland?
Yes. All the motions carry. Thank you very much. Let's move on to first readings of ordinances. Madam City Attorney, if you'll read the following ordinances for the first time by title only. A reminder, the second reading and public hearing will be conducted on the 13th of August 2024.
Ordinance number 4524, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point-three plus or minus acres of property located at 403 Magnolia Street to add the historic building overlay district, providing for a quasi judicial public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August 13th, 2024. Do you believe you have some comments in front of you for your consideration prior to second reading?
Yes, thank you. Today, I received a couple emails, and I forwarded those to avoid sunshine or had staff or had staff forward those. Sorry, I didn't forward them, but I had staff. This last one came late and what has happened is we had a public meeting concerning whether or not to keep or sell the building and then we voted. But what we haven't done is had a meeting concerning the contract negotiations that have been done after that. So the board really hasn't had discussions. We've had a lot of questions from constituents and I haven't been able to answer those. And so I didn't know if we'd have enough time for these discussions, but we do. So before we go to second reading on this, I, a lot of the people wanted to know these answers tonight. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights to these because when the Women's Club was approved, they felt that half of it was a sufficient reason to get that taxpayer burden off of the city and to a private entity. So that was a win-win and approved. But the, the questions that have been hit to me is why are we actually advertising for the 120 Flagler Avenue building, but we didn't with this building? And then now we're asking for rezoning all of a sudden. And then with this, half of it was good. We got this to private, but it's going to cause disruption to the existing neighborhood. No parking, no traffic, loud music noise. Previous drinking was allowed under the bridge and took up the parking places of those residents there by the apartments. The events, is it going to be more events than what they had been a city because it wasn't rented that often? I think somebody told me they had the number of events which was low. But if it's private, is it going to be similar to the police calls and disturbances that we have in the residential area of Victoria 1883? The hospital night parking is going to be going away and so that's going to create more parking and traffic problems in that area. And after we heard the consultant tonight, we already know we have a problem in that area. And then the same things that the people oppose short-term rentals because of traffic, parking, loud noise are wanting this. So why is this a double standard? 20 years ago, the Historic Building Overlay District was needed to promote in a dying area, but this isn't the case anymore. It's not the best future use for a residential area and it's non-conforming for valid reasons. The last is if this rezoning goes against staff and board's current goals and plans for the Brandon and Live Oak to break even, then why would we cause more heartache and hardships for them by approving this event planner? And then is it going to be an event center or is it going to be a bar? Or is it going to be a speakeasy? Are there conditions in this that we need to have the attorney make sure that it doesn't disrupt the neighborhood and it's not a bar and it's not those things that have been mentioned in, in the public or to different residents that they've been asking for that? And then finally, the HPC had five years to create a preservation fund to save this building, but they didn't. And they didn't raise the money to save it, but now there's efforts to turn this into, keep it as an event. It could have been an art gallery or a doctor's office or a museum or different things like that. So is the city doing its best job with this rezoning? And several people have asked me why we're approving this.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you bringing that up. Any comments from any of the other commissioners in reply or in support or to discuss this? I understand we'll discuss it more robustly next time, but nothing prevents us from doing it right now.
I have a problem in considering rezoning in any case just to get around a characteristic of the property that you don't like. I believe that when you buy the property, you should know what you can do with it, what is within the regulations. And so to buy a piece of property and then say, yeah, but I don't like X part of the regulations applying to this property. I want to change it. I'm not comfortable with.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others? Mr. Rashidat, any comments from you, sir?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. I think those are just comments. We don't need any action.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to follow these, all these emails and what was sent, I guess forwarded and who on. So this email is from you, correct?
It was a forward from a constituent.
Okay. And is that GB?
Yes.
Do we know who GB is?
I do.
Well, can we share or don't want to?
It's uncomfortable when they're anonymous.
No, I.
I'm just asking. I'm not saying you should. I'm just, I just was trying to understand.
The person did that because they live close to the center.
Understand.
And a lot of the pros have been people that live close to the, to the Women's Club. And it's just, the other person, I think you guys got that timely, but I didn't have reasons and I, and I don't have answers to the whys of this. And I don't know what was in the contract and what is in the negotiation. I haven't seen that. And so when I receive information, I've always asked staff to share that with the whole board so we know. And I don't know any of this. So I don't really want to vote on a second reading when I don't even know what the first reading is about and it's not in any of the details. I have all this stuff that talks about how great the Women's Club was and all the history behind it. And I watched the Historic Preservation Commission, but I still am not seeing the answers to the contract or any of this. So I haven't seen any of that with staff and I still don't see it. And I don't really understand why we have R5 zoning and why we're even doing this at one time. Yeah, I could see the purpose of that, but I just, I'm going to need a lot more information before we ever go to a second reading on this.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
So let's go to the city staff. Ron, you or Mr. Rashidat or the city attorney, can we expect to understand some of the, the details behind some of these points?
Some of the points don't really go to the rezoning, but talk about the process. I'm sure Shane can fill in, but the HBOD is intended as an overlay district, so the R3 does not go away. This gets on top of it and it allows the historical use of the Women's Club as it had been. Now, if Shane wants to fill in any other, anything, points I'm missing or Bob?
So more points, good, but let's stick on that one for just a second. I think that was the original intent was to allow the thing to continue to operate as it was for a venue for recitals and weddings and what have you. That was the, I think that was the intent from us. That was the intent expressed by the guy that bought it. And so I still favor, I, I still favor that, not to handcuff now that we've got the deal. I appreciate understanding what the zoning was and what, what, what it should have been or what it could be and do your homework upfront. But we, we had previously operated it as a venue and I think the idea was to continue to operate it as a venue. That, that was my understanding. Goes back to Shane, you want to fill in some of these holes? Because we've got at least one of us up here who doesn't know the answer to some of those that getting asked by the public, what they, what the deals.
Ron might have something to say as well.
Sir.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah. In terms of the timing on the ordinance, I've been working with Mr. Hodges on negotiating the contract. He's reviewing a, a final restrictive covenant document. We have the ability right now to obtain about $390,000 from the state from our original Women's Club grant for the work that we did on the project. The state is willing to give us that money, even though we didn't complete the project as part of the original plan. They're willing to give us the money, but the requirement is we place a restrictive covenant on that project that any renovations to that building has to go to them for a historic review for a 10-year period. Mr. Hodges is, is reviewing that document. If he agrees to that document, we'll include that as a condition on the contract that we're negotiating with them for the overall purchase. Then we can receive about $390,000 back from the state that we had put into the project. So we anticipate having that done and to the commission prior to the second reading of the rezoning ordinance.
Can I understand that? If we say no and we don't do that, we're out the 390,000?
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the HBOD request?
No, it does not.
I think I remember, I remember Mr. Mather at the P&amp;Z, I think, or HPC meeting discussing the number of buildings that have the HBOD designation. It doesn't seem to be an area so much as a couple of buildings throughout New Smyrna Beach. Is that correct? I never trust my memory.
That is correct. So it's available to all properties in the city, but they can show that their structures have historical uses that are not allowed in the current zoning. So currently we've had four applications in the past. There's currently three active ones. There was one that was rescinded before the building was demolished.
So at the moment, there are three buildings throughout the, in the entire city that have the HBOD designation. It's just hard to call it a district when it's a single building and they're scattered.
So it's an overlay that they can apply for.
Can you elaborate on the restrictive covenant document, what that means, Ron?
The restrictive covenant for a period of 10 years from the exercise of the covenant requires the owners of the property, be it us or any subsequent owner, for a period of 10 years to send to the state any renovation plans that modifies the exterior appearance of the building, for them to review and approve that. So in order for them to make any renovations, they have to get approval from the state agency on those approvals. Now additionally, since it's a local landmark, they have to go through our process as well. So any, anybody who buys that building from us or we do that and make any renovations, we have to go through our local review process and any subsequent owners has to go through ours and the state process as well, if that restrictive covenant is on that property.
Could I just ask a question? Do we get, assuming that those documents are executed, we get the 300 and change now, but then would have to pay it back if, if it's not kept together for 10 years? Or do we wait the full 10 years to get the 300?
No, we get, we get the money upfront. If, if it's demolished, notwithstanding acts of God.
Yeah.
If it's demolished intentionally or if modified without permission, then for a period of the first five years, we have to pay the 100% back.
Okay.
From year six through 10, then we would pay 50% back.
Thank you.
Other questions here that the staff can fill in? Shane, you got any answers to some of those questions?
Well, Bob is really the expert on historic preservation, so is there specific question?
Yes, the restrictive covenants didn't have anything to do with future use or changing the zoning or protecting the neighborhood from the noise and the parties and the alcohol in the street and all of that, correct?
No, no.
Is it, is it exterior?
Order, please. She asked a question. He needs to answer it. And if you have another one, we'll get to you.
Well, the restrict, the restrictive covenant was to address your concern about reviewing the terms of the contract prior to the rezoning. And my comment was just to assure you, you will know what the terms of the contract, you'll probably have it under review at the same meeting that you're considering the second reading of this ordinance.
Mr. Martin?
The restrictive covenant, if I understand correctly, refers to the state paying us back the money, which refers to the exterior of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all. So I was saying that it's part of the same.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the zoning question then. That, none of that helps the neighborhood with what their questions are on what I just asked? The parking issues, the traffic issues?
Right. So what we were tasked was to come up with an ordinance that allows the future property owner to go to use the property, how the city's been historically using it, which is a venue to be leasable out to private individuals with no required parking for that venue.
And how will that impact our current goals for Live Oak and Brandon Center?
Well, that wasn't my task. My task was not to figure out what it would be to other venues.
Any other questions for the staff? I want everybody to be able to answer ahead of time so that you know what it is you're voting on and you're going to answer the questions of your constituency. Do you have any taskers that you want to go back and do?
Are there, is, is this person prohibited from putting a nightclub speakeasy type in that facility?
Nightclubs and taverns are not a permitted use in that zoning district. So he would still be subject to whatever the permitted uses are under the R5. The HBOD gives an additional use, which is being an assembly to rent out without required parking.
Just to clarify, the only reason for the HBOD overlay is to take away the required parking?
No, it provides a use.
Or does that also play into the restrictive covenant and the 300 and change?
The simplest way to put it is it, it grandfathers the use conditions that were in effect when we owned it as a venue. That's the best way to say it.
No, and I, I appreciate that, but the net result, I mean, the bottom line result is that it does not add the normal required parking that would be true in another area.
Correct.
Thank you.
What, was it an option for him to keep this as R5 or any possibilities that he could remodel the building and not keep it as an event?
The, the issue that we had is it, is it, we could have made an argument that it was a continuation of a non-conforming use from when we operated as a venue, but that, that doesn't give him a lot of assurances moving forward in terms of trying to get financing. So the best way to do that would be to buy this overlay. It sort of codifies and makes permanent the non-conformity that exists. So what, what it does is it codifies the grandfather, and as I said earlier, the grandfathering rights of that use that existed at the time we operated it.
So I think that was a long answer. So did the applicant or the buyer want to have this as anything existing in R5 now? Is that, or was it the city that didn't want that?
His, his intent was to operate it as a venue. Our, our goal was to find a code amendment that codified and extended his non-conformity. And this was a legal way to do that through the overlay district, to give him some assurances that, so the problem with non-conformities if it's damaged beyond 50%, you know, by any event, he loses his non-conforming status. So he didn't want to invest a million or $2 million in this property and six months later it burns down and he loses his right to rebuild it because he's lost his non-conforming status. This overlay district gives him more permanence of that non-conforming use.
That restrictive covenant, does it have to be the same owner for 10 years? Can he sell it?
It, it goes, runs with the land.
So he can sell it and the new owner can agree with that, those terms and we won't lose the, the money back?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're good, sure. Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming up and answering the questions. Okay, there are no boards or commissions to consider?
We still have 10B.
10. Oh, there's more to, okay.
C, D.
Yeah. You've had, you've had the readings, right?
Yes. I'm going to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance number 4624, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article 2, Definitions, Section 201, General Definitions, to provide a definition of floor area ratio, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August 13th, 2024. Ordinance number 4724, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach rezoning 1.1 plus or minus acres of property located at 1300 South Atlantic Avenue from B2 Neighborhood Business District to PUD Planned Unit Development, and approving the New Smyrna Beach Mixed Use Garage Building Planned Unit Development Master Development Agreement, authorizing the mayor to execute the New Smyrna Beach Mixed Use Garage Building Planned Unit Development Master Development Agreement, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August 13th, 2024. Ordinance number 482024, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach authorizing New Smyrna Beach Utilities to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a septic-to-sewer project in Silver Sands for a term exceeding four years, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be August 13th, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. And now on to section 11, which we have no items. So now final, final is the mayor and commissioner reports. Commissioner Martin.
Well, as you noticed during the original public participation, I have a book of emails from the residents in that area, and I'd probably say, let's call it a half-mile radius around the, the South Atlantic property, objecting to both changing our land regulations to enable a parking structure, floor area ratio to be excluded from the size calculations of the building. They do not believe we should change our land regulations based on the request for a single project. And in addition, the size and scope of the, the PUD suggested or the request for the PUD, there are large objections to having this PUD be for this one unit that is oversized, overscaled, and not compatible either architecturally or complete with the residential neighborhood that is surrounding it. So I would like it to go on the record that there are strong reservations to both of these ordinances. What did we have, 30 or 40 people here tonight alone being told that nothing was going to happen tonight and they still showed up? I think we need to take the residents in that area into consideration. Thank you.
Mayor, may I just make one statement?
Ma'am.
I would caution you all on commenting on items that are going to be quasi-judicial public hearing. There's some due process issues involved when we're, when we're taking them up, whether we're just commenting or discussing with the, without the applicant being notified. So I just would encourage you all to hold comments for August 13th, and I would recommend submitting those emails to staff so we can send them to the applicant since they've been discussed tonight.
I think it would be nice if we made a policy that for first, we have many first readings that are controversial, and I, I think we need a standardized method. Other municipalities certainly do have conversation and public participation on first reading. Perhaps we should consider doing that.
Yes, so we had revised our policy because there were issues with people, the evidence doesn't come in until the public hearing, and commissioners were reflecting their, the way they were going to vote on a matter before they had heard all the evidence. So other municipalities do vote on first reading, but they, it's kind of a, almost like the Platts, ministerial, ministerial, moving it on to second reading when the actual evidence will be discussed and we can talk offline about it.
Commissioner.
On this issue?
No, 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 closing comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Don't talk about this.
Yeah, no intention to, that's why I was checking. Juneteenth celebration Friday night was fantastic. Done very well. My hat is off to all the city staff that participated in that and, and worked on that. It was a great event, very nice, and having Dr. Joyce Cusack as the keynote speaker was great. I mean, wonderful woman, accomplished many things in her life. You can learn a lot. She's the kind of person who you learn a lot from just by being quiet and listening. Vice Mayor did a great job pinch hitting for the mayor on that, and she had some great closing comments on, on the, on the evening. So great job all around, very happy that that was so successful, and I look forward to it next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, you bet. And Vice Mayor.
Thank you for that. I really enjoyed the Juneteenth celebration in the park and also at the Brandon Center. I was pleasantly surprised at the crowd and the number of people we had. I wasn't really planning on a speech at the end, but when they asked, I can't shut up, I guess. I had to speak from the heart and just tell how warm I felt from the community coming together and providing a unity like we did. And it just meant a lot to me, warmed my heart, and I appreciate the nice comments I've received afterwards. And a lot of people, you know, wanted to thank us as a city for providing that at the Brandon and doing this for First Annual. And it meant a lot to us that we took that ownership and did that for our community. We got a lot of positive feedback and, and many thank, thank yous from that. So anyway, it was a blessing to me. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other comments, ma'am? Any other comments? Anything else?
No.
Okay, good enough. Commissioner Hartman.
So first, I think the economic summit was a great event to attend. There was a lot of wealth of information there. I looked, like somebody commented earlier, I look forward to their final decision and how they're going to make their, their path move forward. Also, the event in the park, Juneteenth Celebration, in both the park and the gala was well-attended. Staff did a phenomenal job on both events. You know, you can't say enough about them. It was, we were there quite a while, but it was entertaining all night long, so we certainly did enjoy that, and I certainly appreciate it. Last Friday, we had our opioid meeting in which we handed out almost $2.6 million in grants for some various opioid projects throughout Volusia County. Police and fire both got their grants approved, so they're in that process. I think there's some final details to be worked out on some of that stuff. We didn't spend all the money we had anticipated, so there'll be another grant cycle in six months. So there's other opportunities out there for more programs and more people to participate. I had an item on the agenda for the workshop and we never got around to it, so I'm going to bring it up tonight, and I just want to get a consensus from the commission if whether or not there's enough interest in moving it forward. And that issue is our nepotism policy. We have a policy where we don't hire any family members within the city. You know, that stands in the face of some departments. It's kind of a historical thing for fire, police, for fathers to follow sons, that sort of thing, yet we have this policy, it's a blanket policy where we don't hire any family members within, you know, in the city. There are currently husbands and wives and girlfriends and boyfriends at work, but not, we won't hire family members. Just my opinion is I, I think that we've taken the statute and taken it a little further than it was intended. So what I'd like to do is have a discussion about that at some point in time and maybe look at our ordinance where we've, with the policy procedure manual that deals with nepotism. But I promised Heather that I would get a consensus from us to make sure that there was enough of us interested in moving that forward. I think this summer will be a great opportunity for you to reach out to her and others and talk about it and get some more information, and we can bring it back at a further date, but I did want to get consensus to move it forward. If I'm the only one up here that wants to take a look at it, it's, I'm wasting air.
Now, interesting conversation is your idea to direct staff to make a presentation that we could discuss?
It's, my, my thought tonight was just to see if there was consensus enough to do, give that direction. If I don't have three people that don't want to even hear the discussion.
I'm interested. Anybody, is there objections to having that discussion?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Then yes, and I would have, you know, asked if staff could bring something back about that and the pros and cons. You know, you, you can also talk to, you know, police and fire chiefs and, and see what their positions are on this. It's probably the ones that would affect the most. You know, unfortunately, we had a police recruit that we had to turn down because he had a family member that worked in parks or streets or something like that. So, you know, you, I went to the economic summit and I hear, I hear this all the time is we want to create jobs so that our children and our grandchildren can stay here, but they can't stay here if one of us already works at the city. So it's kind of counterintuitive to me to make that statement all the time. I, I know it's an easy way out, just say no to everybody, but I, I don't necessarily know that that's truly what, you know, the direction we want to go, so certainly do appreciate you guys giving me the consensus for that, we'll move forward with it, however the city manager wants to do that.
Sure. Mayor, I mean, we have the policy for a reason. You know, everybody wants to hire their, their family members. But the problem is that when you do, especially in the same department, it creates an issue. That's why we have the policy. It just makes it a lot easier. And I understand that, you know, there's in the fire department tradition and history that you have father and son, that they do that, but I think if we needed to do anything, I think it has to be in a different department. In the same department, because at some point, I mean, I mean, the promotion becomes a problem because if you are being promoted and then at that time you're going to be supervising your sibling or whatever, it becomes a problem. So it becomes a problem for, for us and problem for them as well because they couldn't be promoted because of that. But whatever the commission desire is, we'll have Heather prepare a, a report and we'll come back to you with some pros and cons and suggestions.
Excellent. I think that's our will, that's our wish, and I would particularly like to understand experience from our fire chief and our police chief and their colleagues that have been in the business for a while, given that special, potentially offering them special consideration because it is a different calling than, than, than others. So interested in that, that'll be, that'll be enjoyable to go through. Anything else, sir?
Yes, finally, because we do get the next month off, kinda, I wish everybody a happy summer, so.
That's right, enjoy your next 23 days.
Yeah.
Study the budget. Okay, a shout out to Coach Tim McCray. He's at New Smyrna High, is honored as Volusia County Flagler County's High School Girls' Coach of the Year earlier this month. Just want to shout out to him. He himself is a Spruce Creek grad for back-to-back 123-pound state championships in 1988 and '89, and a bronze medal at the Pan American Games, and he represented the United States at the Summer Olympics. He's brought home three boys weightlifting state championships in 2010, 2014, and '15. Coach McCray, we're lucky to have you here in our town. A letter from Tom Wright, Senator Wright, congratulating us on the $837,000 that we got for, in the state budget for one of the stormwater mitigations, but lamenting that we did not get the generators for Babe James, Live Oak, or the Jim, or the Barracuda Roadway improvement. So we're going to keep, we will keep, we will be vigilant. I also understand that many other stormwater initiatives in the state were not approved. Puzzling in a year that beholds many stormwater challenges. Thank you for the Juneteenth, excellent job you did. I regret not being able to come to that, so delighted that the commission turned out in force. Hats off to the Chamber of Commerce for specifically Mr. Bob Williams for leading us in the Economic Development Summit. I think it was a, the most innovative and productive time we've had, and I look forward to seeing, as does Mr. Hartman, the, the results of that. I think that's it. We'll move now to the Assistant Deputy City Clerk. Anything for your report, ma'am?
No report at this time.
Thank you so much, and thank you for excellent job. Appreciate you. Adam, City Attorney, how are we doing?
No report tonight.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir, yours.
We forgot to mention about going to celebrate with Ms. Patty Champlis, her 100-year birthday today at the Live Oak Cultural Center. So the mayor and I and the police chief went there and as well as Sheriff Chetwood.
Yeah, we get to see the sheriff a lot, and you know, when he shows up, it's usually something special. This was a 100th, 100th birthday party for the lady who is behind the Gamea Bridge in New Smyrna. Started it a gazillion years ago. It was a World War II Navy nurse deploying to parts of the world where no one would want to go. Came to New Smyrna and has the most, most clear alacrity I've seen for someone that is a centurion on Friday. She will be 100 years old. So thank you for setting that up. It was at the Live Oak Center. The Council on Aging was there. Of course, they were playing their bridge games, and she is like a celebrity around town. She's an amazing lady.
She actually did work for the city. I remember when I started here, she used to teach bridge at Coronado Civic Center, and she kept doing that until she was 92, so.
Yeah, youngster, she's teaching the youngsters how to do it. Okay, so we have a couple meetings coming up. We've got the one on Set the Millage, July 23rd, that's a 5:00 PM meeting. We've got the August 1st public meeting with a parking lot consultant at the Brandon Center at 5:00 PM. The workshop on the 7th of August, all day for the budget workshop.
August 7th.
August 7th, sorry. And Tuesday, August 13th, the regular commission meeting, and many other things after that. Okay, so yes, joining Commissioner Hartman and saying, enjoy your summer off. I look forward to seeing everybody back here in August. Thank you. Or adjourned.